Good evening and welcome, everybody. Thanks for taking the time out of your night to join us for tonight's public hearing that we're holding. This is a public hearing for the multiple discharger variance and permitting strategy for Mercury for fiscal years 2025 through 2029. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'm just going to be moderating the hearing tonight. So I'll kind of be your guide as we walk through tonight's event. Before we get started, this is what our agenda looks like. So we're going to start off with an introduction, which is what I'm doing right now. And then the big keep thing to keep in mind is that tonight's hearing is going to be in two parts. We're going to start off with an informational session. That's where Eagle is going to present information on this project, I guess, or this variance. And then we'll have a question and answer session right afterwards for about 15 minutes maximum. And then we're going to talk about the other ways to submit official comments, and then we're going to move right into the official hearing part. Now that's the part where you have an opportunity to make a statement for tonight, and then we're going to talk about who to contact in case you have further questions. All right. A couple of other things to keep in mind, outlines are going to be muted during the hearing, so you'll be able to hear us, but you'll be muted unless you would like to make that comment or ask a question verbally, which we'll talk about how we're going to do that a little bit later. You'll be using the raise hand icon. You can also do that on the phone. And again, I'll if you're on the phone calling in, we'll talk about how to do that later. But at any time, you can actually ask a question using that Q and A box in your Zoom toolbar. And we will answer those questions during that Q and A period after the presentation. And then also just here where we are recording this hearing, this hearing will be posted on Ego's YouTube channel tomorrow. And so you'll be able to watch it again or forward it on if you so choose. All right. And we're at the point, we're going to kick things off with our other Eagle staff. So I'm going to invite Glenn Schmidt to turn his camera on and kind of go through the introductions for tonight. Welcome, Glenn.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. I'm going to share my screen here. All right. All right, welcome in. Thank you for joining us today for our presentation on the draft multiple discharge variance and permitting strategy for Mercury for fiscal years 2025 through 2029. As Ryan mentioned, my name is Glenn Schmidt. I'm an aquatic biology specialist in permit section of Water Resources Division, and I'll be handling most of the presentation today. So in a minute here, I'm going to introduce some of the other staff involved here, and I'll ask them to turn their camera on and wave real quick. First, we have Christine Alexander. She's a manager of permit section. Next, we have Amanda Bozak. She's a unit supervisor in permit section for the water quality and aquatic nuisance control permits unit. Next, we have Darren McCullough, an aquatic biologist in the water quality and nuisance control permits unit. And then we have Kevin Goodwin, an aquatic biology specialist in the Great Lakes watershed assessment restoration and management section. And then finally, we have Ryan Blazek from the Environmental Support Division. So we are all from the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy within the Water Resources Division. All right, I'm going to try to, oh, there we go. All right. I had to advance the slide, sorry. The Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy's mission is to protect Michigan's environment and public health by managing air, water, land, and energy resources. Michigan has an abundance of surface water resources, including the Great Lakes and their connecting channels, thousands of miles of Great Lake shoreline, thousands of inland lakes, tens of thousands of river miles, and millions of acres of wetlands. Eagles Water Resources Division administers the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permitting Program, which aims to protect water resources by addressing point source water pollution. This program controls the discharge of pollutants into our surface waters by imposing effluent limitations to protect water quality. Although NPDS is a federal program, Michigan has been granted the authority to implement the program. Today, we'll be talking about the multiple discharge variance for Mercury under the State of Michigan NPDS program. Multiple discharger refers to many facilities, so a variance may be applicable under certain conditions when facilities with an NPDS permit cannot meet a water quality standard. So for this presentation, we are discussing the variants for Mercury. The water quality standard for Mercury is very low at 1.3 nanograms per liter or 1.3 parts per trillion. So as an analogy, one nanogram per liter or one part per trillion is one gallon of water or work, sorry, one gallon of contaminant per trillion gallons of water. So we're talking extremely small amounts of mercury. So we are all, why are we all here today? First, the multiple discharge variance is a process. Water Resource Division must update every five years. This process includes updating the multiple discharge variance for Mercury, how the conditions of the variance will be implemented in the NPDS permits. It requires public notice where we receive and review public comments, and we eventually submit that variance to USC PA for their review and approval. So we're currently in the public comment period for the proposed multiple discharge variance. So today, we're going to review some of the information on Mercury, discuss why Mercury is a parameter that is eligible for a variance and a multiple discharge variance. We will run through the history of the multiple discharger variance for Mercury. We'll review some affluent and ambient data from Michigan. And as an ambient data is going to refer to any of the current conditions in our environment, like from our surface waters or air. And then we'll give an overview of the proposed variance, which will cover the permitting years 2025 through 2029, and then we'll answer any questions near the end. Mercury is a naturally occurring metal. It has been used in thermometers, dental fillings, and is used in compact fluorescent bulbs. So people may ask, you know, if it is naturally occurring, why is it such a big deal? So due to human and industrial activities, mercury is more available in our environment than it would be naturally. Through burning of fossil fuels with mercury and uses such as dental fillings, mercury makes its way into land and water. Once mercury enters the environment, it can transform to methyl mercury and become part of the food chain and bioaccumulate. Bioaccumulation results in the animals at the top of the food chain having higher exposure to mercury. Mercury enters our aquatic systems and is taken up by the organism at the bottom of the food chain, such as insects, snails, clams, and they are eaten by small fish, which in turn are eaten by larger fish, and then even larger fish after that. At each level of the food chain, more and more mercury is transferred to the next organism. Increasing the amount of mercury at the top of the food chain. So when humans eat fish, we become the top consumer in the food chain. So you may have heard about the Eat Safe Fish Guide from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, which tells us how much fish we can safely eat and the best ways to prepare the fish to limit our exposure to pollutants like mercury. We are concerned with how much exposure animals and humans have to mercury because it is a neurotoxin. It can cause damage to the brain and nervous system, especially in developing fetuses in children. For these reasons, mercury is labeled as a bioaccumulative chemical of concern and is regulated by Michigan Eagle. The federal regulations under 40 CFR Part 131.14 allows states to adopt variance provisions in their water quality standards. In addition, 40 CFR Part 132 describes the water quality guidance for the Great Lakes system. This guidance identifies the minimum water quality standards, anti-degradation policies, and implementation procedures for the Great Lakes system to protect human health, aquatic life, and wildlife. Michigan's Water Quality Standards Regulation for variance is included in Michigan's Part Four Water Quality Standards. These, this variance rule describes the situations and the process permittees follow to request a variance. In addition, the rule includes information related to a multiple discharge variance. Variants from the water quality standard are allowed if it is demonstrated that attaining the water quality standard is not feasible. A multiple discharge variance is allowed if it is necessary to avoid widespread non-compliance for many facilities. Under the multiple discharge variance, compliance with the limit represents a level currently achievable or LCA. How the level currently achievable limits for mercury have been determined has changed over time, and I'll go through some of that information in some of the upcoming slides. Next, under the multiple discharge variance, existing dischargers cannot be permitted a higher limit or a higher LCA than what was permitted in the previous permit. So for example, if the current permit, we set a limit for a facility or at five nanograms per liter, for example, in that next permit, we cannot increase that limit to 10, you know, it has to be five or less. For a variance involving a bioaccumulative chemical of concern like mercury, a pollutant minimization program or PMP is required. In our rules, it's Rule 3231213 in the Part Eight Rules. Those rules outline the requirements for a pollutant minimization program. So in addition, the rule also states that reasonable progress must be made under the PMP to attain the water quality standard, which is 1.3 nanograms per liter for mercury. So why does mercury meet our requirements for a multiple discharger variance? If limits were set at the water quality standard, which is 1.3 nanograms per liter, we would have widespread non-compliance. The ambient conditions in our rivers and lakes are above that standard, and it has been determined that air deposition is the main contributor of mercury loads in Michigan. The air deposition of mercury is mostly from sources outside of our state. Next, the technology has not adequately advanced enough for the department to mandate treatment for mercury at all facilities. So in addition, as you'll see later in the presentation, many facilities are making great efforts with best management practices and source tracking under their PMP program to reduce mercury. So to avoid widespread non-compliance, a multiple discharger variance was requested by Eagle. This process, you know, as I mentioned earlier, requires a public notice and review of any comments that we receive. And after that public comment period, the supporting documentation, documentation is sent to USC PA for approval. And once approved is approved for a five-year term. A little bit of history on Michigan's mercury multiple discharge variance. So the first multiple discharger variance for mercury was approved in Michigan in around 2000. And around that time, that's when analytical method EPA method 1631 became available. This analytical method is about 400 times more sensitive than the previous method, which was EPA method 245.1. EPA method 1631 created a potential for widespread non-compliance for mercury. Or sorry, for Michigan in our NPDS permits because of the lower quantification level. So the first variance allowed for a level currently achievable to be set at 30 nanograms per liter for all existing NPDS facilities that needed a mercury limit. The level currently achievable limit of 30 was set based on information out of the state of Maine and limited effluent data from Michigan permittees. All existing NPDS permittees covered under this, this variance were required to develop and implement a PMP. All new facilities with the potential to exceed that, the water quality standard for mercury were required to have that mercury limit of 1.3 nanograms per liter and cannot be covered under the multiple discharger variance. In 2004, the variance was updated and renewed at as, as we, it's required to be renewed every five years. There were, there was more Michigan affluent data available, and the department determined that most facilities can meet a lower LCA. So under the, this variance, the level currently achievable was lowered to 10 nanograms per liter for all existing facilities. The reason for setting the limit at 10 nanograms per liter was that 42 out of the 45 facilities with mercury limits or monitoring had mean concentrations below 10 nanograms per liter. In addition, 35 out of the 45 facilities had mean concentrations below five nanograms per liter. Again, the pollutant minimization program was required in all new facilities with a potential to exceed that standard or the standard were still required to have a mercury limit of 1.3 nanograms per liter. So this version of the variance was approved by EPA Region Five in June of 2004. In 2007, a lawsuit filed by the National Wildlife Federation on behalf of the Lone Tree Council questioned the legality of the statewide level currently achievable mercury limit of 10 nanograms per liter at all of the facilities. As a result, the department established a policy and procedure for developing site-specific level currently achievable limits using affluent data from each facility. In 2009, the department updated the variance again. And we also began developing site-specific level currently achievable limits for mercury based on permit-specific affluent data. The department witnessed a significant increase in the number of facilities that had mercury monitoring and/or limits from 45 to 191 facilities. 81% of these facilities had mean concentrations of mercury above the standard with 19% below the standard. These results continue to demonstrate widespread non-compliance with the water quality standard. Again, this version required, or this version of the variance required a PMP be completed by the facilities and all new facilities with a potential to exceed the standard were required to have a mercury limit of 1.3 nanograms per liter. This multiple discharge variance was approved by EPA in January of 2010. In 2011, we had some questions from a permutee on their mercury level currently achievable limit. So the department revised the policy procedure for calculating a level currently achievable. The updated policy procedure resulted in a slight change to the, the way the calculation was determined for facilities that submit mercury data sets with 10 or more results that are above 0.5 nanograms per liter, which 0.5 is the quantification level for EPA method 1631. The subsequent variances approved in 2014 and 2019 were based on this revised policy procedure for calculating a level currently achievable. All NPDS permitted facilities covered under the variance must continue to implement a PMP and demonstrate progress towards reducing mercury in their affluent. Finally, all new facilities with a potential to exceed the water quality standard for mercury are still required to have a mercury limit of 1.3 nanograms per liter. Ambient surface water data for mercury indicates much of Michigan's surface waters continue to be impaired due to mercury and continue to exceed the water quality standard of 1.3 nanograms per liter. As a result, a statewide mercury total maximum daily load for inland surface waters was approved by EPA in 2018. Since its approval, the list of include surface waters has been appended every two years. So we've added surface waters to that original TMDL. Many of Michigan's surface waters that are impaired due to mercury also do not support the fish consumption designated use. Michigan has a statewide fish consumption advisory for mercury, which was first issued in 1988. Fish tissue analysis of samples collected from our inland waters between 2013 and 2022 indicate 82% of the samples exceed fish consumption screening values. Atmospheric deposition is the source of the majority of mercury pollution in our surface waters. Most of the atmospheric deposition originates outside of Michigan with about 7.8% of the state's atmospheric load of mercury from in-state sources. Michigan's statewide mercury TMDL identifies multiple studies that, that show mercury wet deposition has been decreasing in other parts of the country and can be attributed to the reduction of mercury in commercial products and reduction from coal-fired utilities. From 2002 through 2017, there had been approximately a 71% decrease in mercury in Michigan mercury emissions. It is anticipated that further reductions have been achieved since 2017 as a result of decommissioning of coal-fired utilities. And as a result, Eagles Air Quality Division has plans to develop a mercury emissions inventory by end of 2024. From our review of the mercury final effluent concentrations from the period of August 2018 through December of 2023, this, this pie graph shows the percentage of NPDS permitted facilities with long-term mean mercury effluent concentrations greater than and less than the water quality standard of 1.3. Of the 227 facilities that report affluent data for mercury, 131 facilities or about 58% have long-term mean mercury affluent concentrations less than or equal to 1.3 nanograms per liter. And then the remaining facilities, which is 96 facilities or 42% have long-term mean mercury concentrations greater than 1.3 nanograms per liter. Over the past roughly 20 years, you know, Michigan has continued to see an increase in the percentage of facilities being able to comply with the mercury water quality standard of 1.3 with overall concentrations discharged from NPDS permits showing a decreasing trend. The, the reduction of mercury in facility affluent data supports Michigan's approach to use pollution prevention, source control, and other waste minimization programs to move Michigan toward future compliance with a mercury water quality standard of 1.3 nanograms per liter. What this figure illustrates is long-term mean mercury affluent concentrations from the period of August 2018 through December 2023 by permitting sector. So these sectors include wastewater treatment plants, steel manufacturers, power plants, paper manufacturers, auto part manufacturers, landfill and hazardous waste collection facilities, mines, groundwater cleanups, and other industrial dischargers. Publicly owned wastewater treatment facilities make up about 75% of the NPDS permitted facilities with mercury requirements. So as you can see by many of these facilities implementing PMP or sorry, pollutant control and prevention efforts as part of their PMPs, many of these facilities are on the verge of complying with the water quality standard of 1.3. Across all sectors, you know, we have seen a general decrease or in a couple of sectors, no change in the mean mercury concentration. Treatment for mercury can be expensive, but typically might include precipitation with other chemicals or treatment media, absorption of mercury onto media such as activated carbon or filtering wastewater through a semi-permeable membrane. While these types of treatment might offer reductions in mercury, there's no single treatment that has been proven reliable without significant cost. We did a, as part of the, the variance or draft variance, we did complete a review of treatment technology at publicly owned treatment facilities using that affluent data from August 2018 through December of 2023. Of the 98 facilities reviewed, three facilities utilize membrane filtration. 31 have advanced waste treatment limits and employ non-membrane filtration. 15 are considered to employ advanced treatment without non-membrane filtration. Five facilities employ non-membrane filtration without advanced waste treatment limits. And 44 implement mercury PMPs without advanced waste treatment limits or membrane filtration. Again, this information suggests pollutant minimization programs are effective in reducing mercury at a level similar to non-membrane filtration and advanced waste treatment limits. The, the draft multiple discharge variance and permitting strategy for Mercury for fiscal years 2025 through 2029 is a continuation of the previously approved multiple discharge variance. Existing NPDS permitted facilities that currently have an LCA will continue to be covered under the proposed draft variance. LCAs for existing facilities will continue to be developed based on final, based on their final affluent results for total mercury and developed in accordance with policy procedure WRD-PS-007. All facilities with an LC mercury final limit will also be required to continue their PMP activities to reduce or eliminate total mercury with a goal to achieve that water quality standard of 1.3. Michigan believes source reduction and source elimination through PMP activities continues to demonstrate and be the best option for reducing mercury in the affluent of our NPDS facilities. Finally, new facilities cannot be covered under the multiple discharger variance. And if mercury is determined to have a reasonable potential to exceed the water quality standard, add a new facility. The MPS permit will include a monthly average water quality based absolute limit of 1.3 nanograms per liter for total mercury. The public notice of the draft multiple discharge, discharge variance and permitting strategy for Mercury for fiscal years 2025 through 2029 began on May 15, 2024 and goes through July 1st. The public comment period began on May 28th and ends on July 1st. Public comments can also be submitted through this virtual session and public hearing. All comments will be reviewed and responses provided. Comments and responses will be included in the final version of the variance that is submitted to EPA. Finally, like I mentioned, we'll submit the, the variance to EPA for their review and approval. Once it's approved, the variance will be made available on Eagles website. This slide, I think we're just trying to include some additional information and links to some of the information that was presented and some of the resources presented, as well as some of the acronyms used in the presentation. Comments can be submitted via the My Enviro portal link that was included in the public notice sent out on May 9th. The link also has, will be shared in the webinar chat. And we'll also go through a couple of slides on accessing the variance document and, and comment location through the public notice search. If you do prefer a more traditional route, comment letters can be submitted to, to myself. So Glenn Schmidt at Eagle WRD PO Box 30458, Lansing, Michigan 48909. Or you can email me at schmidtg1@michigan.gov. So before we move on to the question and answer session, I'll, I'm going to address how to submit comments or make a statement in the Meyer, through the My Enviro portal for anyone who's interested in submitting comments or statements after the public hearing. So from your preferred search engine, and I'm just using Google here as an example. Just, you can type in My Enviro homepage in the, in the search box. And then the My Enviro link to the My Enviro portal should pop up. So click that link. You'll get a screen, I think, similar to this. And you can And you can select public notice and comments. So click on that link there. This something similar to this will show up, there there might be more or several um public notice. Um permits or information that shows up, but if you if you go to the. The text box for site and type in multiple discharge variance for mercury. Um it should bring up the link and and if you go to the right, you can uh click on that button there, the view uh submit comment link. That will take you to a a screen. That looks like this. Um so you can select the documents tab to view the draft variance and 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 there might be some other related documents in that documents tab. And then if you click on the add comment um button, that will take you to the comment submission form. Which looks like this. The only required items are your name, email and a comment. And there I think the comment does have some character limitations. However, if you want to include an attachment like a letter. Uh you can drop that into the attachment there and then once you're all done, hit submit. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Ryan.
All right, thanks Glenn. Yeah, thanks for that presentation. Some good information for sure. I'm gonna share my screen again, uh so we can continue with. Um tonight's hearing. Right? Just gonna put presentation mode. All right, should be back in business. All right, so we're gonna start our question and answer session. If you, this is your opportunity to ask uh any questions for tonight. Uh any of our panelists, uh it would be great if you could turn your cameras on as well so that we can see you answering. Um and so the way we're gonna do this is you can send me a question anytime using the Q and A box and you see that at the bottom of your screen. Or you can click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If there's anyone on the phone, it doesn't look like we have anyone right now, but if I'm missing you and you're on the phone, you can select. Pound two, that will also raise your hand and then we'll basically call on you. Um and then you can unmute yourself and ask your question. So I've got a few questions in here. Um okay, first question, I know we talked about atmospheric deposition. Um and uh also, I guess, keeping in mind that tonight's uh hearing is about mercury and water. But their question is on air, mercury spread in air, is it measured in air quality? And then can the contaminant enter the body by breathing it in? Um anybody provide any information related to that question?
I think we're gonna have to get back with um Jacqueline after talking with some of our folks in in air quality that. Would not be our expertise.
Gotcha.
I'll I'll chime in real quick because I did uh while we were while we were waiting, because it's not our expertise, I looked it up and. I think the initial answer, we can get you some links to this, but is that they do measure in air quality monitoring. Um and they do talk about it being breathed in, but not sounds like from atmospheric, it's mostly from like if you have a thermometer, mercury thermometer that breaks and the vapors from that. So there's some good information online that we can get you that'll follow up on that.
Yeah, I I envisioned too the second part of that question, how long does it stay in your body, it's also part of that. Um and I saw Jim put something in the chat as well related to mercury exposure, which may help answer some of those questions. Um and then another question, uh are we looking at all types of mercury? And the comment is I see there are three types.
I I mean, as part of our the MPES permit, we're looking at total mercury, um that's kind of how our our water quality standard is expressed. So that that should include all forms of mercury. You know, that's what their water quality standard is based on. We don't. We don't uh ask permittees to measure mercury and it's different forms, it's just reported as total mercury.
All right, thanks Glenn, that's helpful. Um so have you had any reduction, so have you had? And reductions on the amount of mercury and fish tissue for this time period, I guess he means any reductions. So have you had any reductions in the amount of mercury and fish tissue was the question?
That's a good question, um we might have to ask our fish contaminant expert uh that question and get back with you.
Yeah, there is a summary in the draft variance document on um. On um fish data, so um if you. If you have access to that, which hopefully everyone does, um there is a section in the in the draft variance that addresses um fish tissue.
Yeah, and the person who asked that question was looking since beginning the variance two thousand. And then I said, oh yes, uh sorry, yes, I'll look at the summary. So the person asking the question said that they will take a look at that summary. All right, uh let's see here, are there any other questions uh for tonight? Um I should mention that there aren't going to be any questions uh. That will be able to answer during the hearing part, which is coming up next, so this is your opportunity to ask those questions in case you have any. Um and then if we don't have further questions or once we're through with questions. Uh what we'll do is we'll talk about the ways to submit a comment again. Uh and then we'll go into the hearing part where everyone will have an opportunity to make a statement about of the variance tonight. Um see I have a raised, oops, had a raised hand, looks like it got lowered. We'll give a couple more seconds, see if that person would like to raise their hand. And and if not, still not seeing any raised hands or in the question answer. Boxes that we haven't answered. All right, and just so you know, in case you do come up with a question. Uh I will be providing Glenn's contact information at the end as well in case. Um you have any questions that you'd like to follow up with, so even though this is gonna be the last opportunity to ask questions of our panel tonight. Um you can reach them after the hearing uh to ask questions at um another time if you have them. All right, so I'm not seeing any others, so we're gonna go on. And move on to the next part of the hearing, thanks to all who asked questions and to our panel. Uh for taking time tonight to answer those. All right. All right, so those other ways to submit official comments, uh as Glenn mentioned, you can do that through Eagles My Enviro. Uh portal, um they're under submission HQ two eight six Q four nine eight five QB. But or by mail to Glenn Schmidt, Eagle Water Resources Division, PO Box three zero two seven three, Lansing, Michigan. Four nine zero nine zero dash seven 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 three and then um the public hearing will be open until July first. Um and so that's if you don't want to make a comment tonight, or if you have additional comments. Um you're welcome to provide them those other ways. All right, so now we're gonna go ahead and move on to the hearing part. Uh you know, as part of the formalities for tonight's hearing, I do have a hearing statement. To read for us tonight, um so bear with me, it's can be a little lengthy. Um in the first part, we'll talk about the procedures for the hearing. All right, so this public hearing will be used to take comments on the proposed multiple discharge of variance from mercury. Which outlines a process to allow for water quality standard variance from mercury. This is a statewide variance, allowing eligible permittees under National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. To complete pollution reduction of mercury without causing widespread non-compliance with permit limits. The Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy is seeking approval. From the United States Environmental Protection Agency for a multiple discharge variance. Uh for mercury for fiscal years twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine. Previous multiple discharge variances for mercury have been approved by USCPA in the year two thousand, two thousand four, two thousand nine, two thousand fifteen and twenty nineteen. All right, the next part, what I'm gonna talk about is how to comment process will work today. For those of you who pre-registered to attend tonight's hearing. Uh and indicated you would like to make a comment, we will call your name and unmute your microphone so you can make a comment. We will call your name in the order in which you registered. Once we have called the names of everyone who indicated they wanted to make a comment during registration, we will open it up to comment. From other attendees, at that time, if you have not made a comment in which to do so, please click the raise hand icon. But to indicate you wish to make a comment. If calling in by phone only, please hit pound two on your phone to raise your hand. We will call on those who have had their hand raised to make a comment in the general order in which the hand was raised. Each person will have five minutes to make their comment. I will indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. If I indicate that your time has expired, please wrap up your comments immediately so that we can allow the next person to make their comment. Well, please be sure to state your name and any organization you represent prior to starting your comment. If you like to make a comment, but do not wish to make a verbal verbal comment today, you are welcome to submit a written comment to the department. Written comments may be submitted online in our My Enviro database that we talked about before, a link is being provided in the chat. To the comment submission form, comments can also be directed to Glenn Schmidt at the following address, Water Resources Division. Eagle PO Box three zero four five eight, Lansing, Michigan, four eight nine zero nine dash seven nine five eight. The hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in the draft document. Comments received will not be responded to at this time. But will be included in the response to public comments documents and part of the permit record. All comments and information received will be available on my enviro, our online database. And the public comment period is open until July first, twenty twenty-four. All right, and so with all of that, we'll begin taking comments. Uh as mentioned in that statement, we will start with the people during registration who indicated they want to make a comment. Uh however, we didn't have anybody um indicate they wanted to make a comment or registration, so we're gonna go straight to raised hands. So if you have a comment that you would like to make. Uh you're welcome to raise your hand and we'll call on you in the order that the hand was raised. Uh everybody will have five minutes, um and you'll see, I'll start, once you start your comments. Uh I'm gonna start a timer that'll count down from five minutes and you should see that counting down the upper right-hand corner of your screen. And uh when you have one minute left, you're gonna hear that sound, which uh is a timer indicating you have one minute left. Um and the way this will work too is that everybody will have one chance to make a comment. Uh however, if you're on the phone or on on um logging in, there's someone else there with you that would like to make a comment, it's gonna be one comment per person. So that person can also make a comment, so just let me know and we'll give them an opportunity to make a comment tonight. Um so with that, uh I should also mention that everybody's gonna have a chance, so we'll be here uh until we get through everybody's comments. All right, so it looks like I have a hand raised. Uh Jacqueline Holst, uh Jacqueline, you're unmuted on our end, um you can begin your comment when you're ready.
Hello, I just want to thank you all for the background and the information and helping keep watch on this. Um as I did some research, uh the three types of mercury seem quite different. And it seems like there's quite different health impacts uh for them. And it seems like they are from quite different things as well. Um so I would encourage maybe more granular data. Um maybe not every time you test for mercury, but understanding what types of mercury may add value going forward. Thank you.
Uh thank you, Jacqueline, I was having some trouble bringing up my countdown timer, but you were well under five minutes. Right, uh is there anybody else who would like to make a comment tonight? All right, uh we'll give a couple more seconds and if you're calling in by phone, which I'm not seeing anyone else by phone tonight, but again, if I'm missing you. Uh you can select pound two if you're on the phone and that will raise your hand and zoom and we'll call on you. Uh using the last four digits of your phone number, but I'm not seeing that, uh any other? Um comments, still not seeing any, if we don't have any further comments, just let you know, we're gonna move on to. Those other ways to submit a comment again and then. Uh we'll bring up Glenn's information in case you have any follow-up questions for us tonight. All right, still not seeing any, so we're gonna go ahead uh and close this hearing part out. Um so I have a a closing statement to read for us tonight. Uh it's not as long as the opening statement, so as a reminder, the public comment period for accepting written comments is open until July first. The department will consider submit or consider all comments received. Written comments may sub- be submitted online in our My Enviro database. Um a link is being provided in the chat directly to the comments middle form. And then comments can also be received submitted to Glenn Schmidt at the following address, uh Water Resources Division Eagle. A PO Box three zero four five eight, Lansing, Michigan, four eight. Nine, it's actually should be zero nine, I believe, I think online's four nine zero nine zero, I think it should be four nine zero. Four eight nine zero nine uh dash seven nine five eight, or maybe it's two addresses, anybody know who's on the line which would be the correct? Um if the one that the side is correct, maybe we can check that while we're going through. Uh it should still get there regardless of which PO box you use. All right, and again, as promised, we have Glenn's contact information, uh Glenn's uh contact impose is that uh PO box. Where you can send submit comments, or if you have questions, you can contact Glenn at his phone number, five one seven. Two nine zero six four two four. Um and or by email to Glenn Schmidt at uh S C H M I T T G one at Michigan dot gov. Um and that's what I have for contact information tonight. All right, uh I guess before we close up, any other thoughts? Um Christine, if you have any closing comments or not Christine, Amanda, Amanda, if you have any closing comments for us tonight, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Uh thank you all for joining us tonight and we appreciate your time and your interest in the draft variance. You're uh an important part of our process and we look forward to reviewing any comments that you may submit. Uh thank you again and have a great evening.
All right, thank you Amanda, yeah, thanks to uh everyone who's on our panel tonight. Uh all of you for being part of this hearing, the last thing I'll leave you with. Uh just a reminder that this hearing was recorded, we're gonna give it up on our YouTube channel tomorrow so you'd be able to access it. Uh so keep an eye out for it in case you want to forward it on or watch it again. Uh with that, thank you all again and I hope you all have a great rest of your night. Thank you.